The Common Council Meeting for Tuesday, October 4th at 2:00 [S01]03 PM. And can we get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
The meeting was noticed here at City Hall, Piggly Wiggly and Dave's Ace Hardware.
Item number two, approval of agenda. Is there any additions or deletions or concerns? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Did you get that? There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion carries and we have an agenda. Presentation to Bank of Milton and First Community Bank, thanking them for an early call on bank loans.
We'll wait till they get here. They probably weren't going to get here until about 8 o'clock, is what they told me.
Will you text someone, let them know we'll be done by 8?
I don't have either one of their cell phone numbers.
Shocking considering. Can I get any help from the council? Okay, all right, we will go back to item number three at a later point. Item number four is public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. Do we have anybody signed in to speak?
Yeah, Larry.
Larry, first and last name and address?
Larry Lane, 216 North Janesville Street, Milton, Wisconsin. I have a handoff for everybody because I do much better when I have my words in front of me than I do without them. So, I appreciate the time, I will keep it, I promise, to a minimum time. I'm going to go over here to the little person's place here. This works out. Can you all hear me?
Okay.
Perfect. I'm here to talk about the ethics issues that arose in July of this year. And these are my observations. They are not criticisms. They're not intended to be criticisms, they're just observations as a private citizen and also as a person who served on the Ethics Development Committee, the Ethics Ordinance Development Committee. And so here's my thoughts. The Ethics Ordinance was drafted by a committee of citizens through research of existing ethics ordinances and lengthy discussion as to what constitutes ethical governance in the city of Milton. The draft ordinance, and remember, an ordinance is defined as a law enacted by a municipal body such as the city council, was reviewed by the council and unanimously adopted by the city. If there were concerns about the ethics ordinance, the time to raise such concerns or modify that draft ordinance was before the ordinance was adopted into law. The current ethics ordinance, on the books when the alleged ethics violation occurred, clearly outlines the process for investigating any alleged violation of the ordinance. The ethics violation review process outlined in the ordinance has already been initiated by referring the complaint to the Ethics Committee for investigation. I should have put this in there. I believe it is unethical and inappropriate to avoid blocking of the process through legal maneuvering or intimidation. Number six, why has the appointed Ethics Committee not been allowed to carry out the process outlined in the ordinance? Number seven, not honoring the ethics ordinance sets a dangerous precedent for citizens to ignore other ordinances that are not meeting their needs versus the needs of the community. And you may think that's a little crazy, but I don't think so because I was telling Anissa that I would like to have chickens in my backyard. I know there's an ordinance against chickens in the city of Milton, and I'll probably be summoned by the police chief to answer for that if I put chickens in my backyard. However, if I get the right attorney and have the right amount of money, and I'm willing to go to the board for that thing, I could probably get that ordinance repealed. And that could happen with any ordinance we have in this city. If we're not going to stand by our ordinances, then I say remove them and not have any ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Is there any other public comment? Wendy Stewart, did you want to speak? Thanks.
I'll be brief. My name is Wendy Stewart. My address is 1905 South Marion Avenue, Janesville, Wisconsin. I am running for Rock County Treasurer, and I thought I'd introduce myself to you all and let you know a little bit about myself. First off, I'm not a public speaker, so if I get a little shaky, please excuse me. I'm an Army brat. I grew up all over the world. I lived in Germany, Korea, all over the United States, and I settled down here in Rock County. It'll be 21 years at the end of this month. This is where I wanted to settle down to raise my children. My educational background, which kind of qualifies me for this position, I started at URock, like a lot of people in this community have, and I transferred to UW-Madison, and I earned a double major in mathematics and economics. I worked for a while, and then I am a glen for punishment, so I went and started taking accounting classes so that I can sit for the CPA exam. I should be close to getting near the end of that process. In terms of my education applying to this job, I understand things that the treasurer would do, such as investments, CDs, bonds, short-term investments, that the treasurer would have to make decisions upon. I have led and directed over 50 people at a time. I understand how to delegate, but I'm also a firm believer in kind of leading from the front. When you have an office and it's busy, sometimes somebody falls behind. A leader should be willing to step up, learn all the jobs, step up, and help so that everybody's moving forward together. I'm very flexible. I understand different roles. I'm more than willing to cross-train in every position in the treasurer's office in case of an emergency or something like that. I believe in serving the internal customers and the external customers equally, whether you're dealing within, you know, the county office, and then also all the municipalities are the external customers in addition to the taxpayers. One thing that makes people very uncomfortable to talk about, and I'm going to address this here, is that there's a statutory requirement to collect on delinquent taxes, and then, if necessary, to foreclose on homeowners. Nobody wants to do this, but you have to be strong enough to follow the regulations that are set out by the state. And I have the personality and the temperament to do what has to be done, albeit with compassion and understanding, but it has to be done. And so I thank you for your time, and I'm asking for your vote on November 8th.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak during public comments? Okay, item number five, approval of the consent agenda.
I'll move it.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number six, discussion and possible action regarding a proclamation for Manufacturing Matters Week. As many of you have probably heard, the Milton Area Chamber of Commerce is doing a Manufacturing Matters Week, kind of a celebration and a highlight of the manufacturers in the city of Milton, and it's going to be going on all week long, and there are tours that are available at different manufacturing businesses. And Danny, I don't know if all those tours are filled.
We're getting there. Charter NEX only has the, a couple at 10:00 AM available still and 2:00 PM available. United Ethanol has about five spots available tomorrow still, and Air Products has got 11:00 AM only.
Okay, so those are filling up fast, and that's exciting that people are interested in the businesses in the city of Milton. And I have prepared a proclamation that I am ready to read if you all are in consensus that we should have a proclamation. All right, let's proclaim. Manufacturing Matters Week. Whereas the United States Institute of Science and Technology has announced observance of October 7th, 2016, as National Manufacturing Day, and whereas the manufacturing industry is vital to the health of the city of Milton, of Rock County, and our great state of Wisconsin, and whereas manufacturers helped to drive Wisconsin's economy with $21.2 billion in manufactured goods and exports in 2015, and whereas the same year, $11.89 billion in exports was with our free trade agreement partners, and whereas small businesses comprised 87.2% of all exporters in Wisconsin, and whereas Rock County's manufacturing facilities exceed 10,000 full-time workers, and when combined, these 213 firms have an annual payroll of $533,754,000, and whereas the city of Milton supports and commends the Milton Area Chamber of Commerce for highlighting local Milton manufacturers, and whereas public awareness of the value manufacturers add to our economy is essential to the maintenance of good community industry relationships, and whereas all residents are encouraged to take time to salute manufacturers and their employees for the positive economic impact they make in our city, our state, and our nation. Therefore, let it be known that the week of October 3rd, 2016, shall be known as Manufacturing Matters Week in the city of Milton, signed this fourth day of October, 2016, by the mayor, Anissa Welch. There you have it. Finally, something non-controversial, right? And now we get to move on to a more fun proclamation, discussion and possible action regarding the Halloween proclamation. And with the council's concession, I will move on to the Halloween proclamation. Okay, here we go. Whereas the city of Milton wishes a safe and festive Halloween celebration for its citizens and encourages participation in the gaiety of this holiday by both young and old, and whereas miniature ghosts, goblins, witches, and other mysterious creatures emerge each year on October 31st, and whereas they ring doorbells of their neighborhood and friends to extort goodies, and whereas the safety of these small creatures is assured by an accompanying adult and is a source of amusement and good cheer for both the very young and the older people whom they visit and entertain, whereas I, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the city of Milton, proclaim Saturday, October 31st, 2000, it's not on a Saturday this year. Monday, October 31st, 2016, Halloween in the city of Milton. Therefore, let it be known that Monday, October 31st, 2016, shall be known as Halloween Trick or Treat Day, and the celebration will be observed between the hours of 5:30 PM and 7:30 PM, signed this fourth day of October in 2016. And please drive safely that evening, and don't go through the stop signs. Okay. Number eight, discussion and possible action to proceed with the annexation of right-of-way along Cerns Road and to authorize the mayor to sign the annexation petition.
Thank you. This item is one that was discussed earlier this year and will be part of our 2016 roadway improvements. As previously discussed, there is a stretch of Cerns Road that is half in the town, half in the city, and in order to bring that full right-of-way into the city so we have full jurisdiction and control over that right-of-way, we would need to annex in the portion of right-of-way which is not in the city and is currently in the town. We have a signed annexation petition from the property owner to allow that to come into the city, and we have an agreement with the town to allow that to come into the city as well. So the first step in this process would be to authorize Mayor Welch to sign that annexation petition. We would then file that with the state for their review. Upon review, which is about a 20-day process, they would return that. If they have no concerns with that, they would be returned to the city, and then we would have a final adoption of the annexation ordinance at that time, which would likely be our first meeting in November.
Is there any questions or comments?
I move we authorize the mayor to sign the annexation petition.
There's a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number nine, discussion and possible action on a site plan and the rezoning of land located at 1115 East High Street, APUD.
This item was discussed during the Plan Commission. As folks may recall, this rezoning is being requested by the new property owner at 1115 East High Street, which was formerly the Hamill Feed Center. The new owner, Nate Rogers, is looking to redevelop that site and move his business to that location, as well as develop the balance of the site with mixed use of contractor shops and other storage facilities to allow for individuals to move in or store items within those facilities. His project will be completed in a two-phase project, with the first phase being the construction of a 10,000-square-foot facility which would house his badges state maintenance operations, both for the wholesale aspects of it as well as a retail component of it, as well as the construction of six contractor shops which would be used, again, for mixed uses of the storage as well as contractor varieties. The balance of the site would then be developed at a later date with additional contractor shops and storage facilities at the time that Mr. Rogers is available to move forward with that phase of his development. The Plan Commission reviewed not only the rezoning, but also the general development plan and site-specific plan for that project. They recommended the rezoning be approved by the city council and approved the general development plan as well as the site-specific plans. The only action that would be required by the council tonight would be to authorize the rezoning of that property, though. Plan Commission has authority over the general development plan and site-specific plan, so it would be the council's authority to enact that rezoning. And that is the item.
Are there any questions?
I was here for the Plan Commission meeting, and I believe that this change to the PUD is going to be very beneficial to the city. I especially like the idea of the proposed contractor building. I think that those buildings are very beneficial to any small businesses who are currently looking for a location that is outside of their own garage. And with that, I would make a motion that we approve this planned unit development located at 1115 East High Street.
Is it correct, Al, that in the rezoning ordinance itself, it does reflect that the council will not only be approving the rezon, but the general development plan as well?
Yes, oh, sorry, yes.
Oh, it does? Okay. I will add that to my motion, the general development and site-specific plan.
I'll second.
The rezoning, did you say rezoning?
And the rezoning, yeah. Rezoning it to PUD.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. That's really exciting. It's actually almost like going to be a mini incubator, and that's really a cool development for the city of Milton.
It's going to be great.
And just to clarify that motion, was it to approve the first reading, wait the second and third and adopt? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I'll still second. I'm sorry, I just was catching up on other things when you were saying that. I just wanted to make sure.
That's okay.
Okay.
They said it. Just don't check the tape.
I was going to say, review the tape. Okay, we are going to go back to item number three.
Not yet.
Not yet.
We're waiting for Dan's.
Are we just going, okay, all right.
Brendan said he just wanted to see what city business was going on, so.
We just proved a big project for Bank of Milton.
I'm sure you can get in on it somehow. Okay, discussion and possible action regarding an update on the ethics violation complaint involving older person Lotter. As you know, we had received a complaint, and it was reviewed and determined by the first step of the process to be a valid ethics complaint. And at that time, or a few days later, there was an attempt to resolve it prior to going to the Ethics Committee, and we did meet, and there was a response received late Friday, but there has not been any resolution at this point. It's been a couple of weeks since we tried to come up with a resolution, and it has been delayed. And, you know, as you have heard, there's, you know, public concern that there's been a delay, and the complaint has not moved on to the Ethics Committee. And it was requested for us to look at this and for us to have it on the agenda tonight and to talk about whether, you know, I guess the three options are, at this point, to, I mean, it's going to go to the Ethics Committee if there isn't a resolution. I suppose you could vote to rescind the complaint that you filed. You could vote to have more time to come up with a resolution. Mark, are there any other options that I'm missing?
Or just let the matter move forward to the Ethics Committee as previously outlined in the ordinance.
Which would require no motion. Correct.
Right, and I think that's basically what you said initially, Mayor, is that if the current course is that it's been referred to the Ethics Committee, it's been, there's been efforts undertaken to see if a resolution can be reached, as is common in these situations, wherever there's a dispute between two parties, that both parties have been developing further the relevant facts and law. And so, based on that, then it can either move forward with that additional information, can continue to move forward if you take no further action. That's at least the current process. As indicated, you can rescind, you can direct that further efforts be taken to attempt to resolve it prior to moving forward at hearing. I think that's basically, yeah, and that there's really, that those are your options.
I guess maybe not necessarily a fourth option, but as the council saw, there was a response from Ms. Lotter's attorney that was forwarded on to the council. Within that response, there are a number of items that still remain to be resolved. And in speaking with Attorney Schrader, he suggested that there might be maybe a fourth option of having the council discuss that response, either through a memo from Attorney Schrader or in closed session at a future meeting as well.
I had a question. If it, and this was brought up to me, and I don't know the answer, but if it goes to the Ethics Committee, then does the council have to be, give depositions or something like that? Or is there any, is there a legal requirement that Nancy's attorney would request depositions, and the council would therefore give depositions? Or is this not, can you explain that a little bit more?
Sure. The ordinance doesn't provide for that as a procedure, and so there is no authority at this point in time for requiring anybody on either side to give a deposition stating whatever information they have under oath. So, that would not occur at this stage in the proceedings.
And then if it went to the Ethics Committee, and then they referred it back to the council or whatever, is, could the Ethics Committee order the city to pay Nancy's attorney's fees?
The Ethics Committee can't order the city council to do anything. They are a body that makes basically a probable cause finding, and then they forward that on to the council. They would indicate either there is probable cause or there's not probable cause, that there's been a violation of the ethics ordinance and what they believe it would be. They can make recommendations if they wish to the council on what should be done, but the ordinance does not provide the Ethics Committee with any authority over the council. It's totally within the discretion of the council as to what, if any, action it would take based upon the action of the Ethics Committee.
Would there ever be a point where the city would have to pay for Ms. Lotter's attorney's fees if it didn't go to Circuit Court or to an ordinance or something?
At the ordinance stage, there's no provision for either side to pay attorney fees.
Okay.
That's something that, at times, if matters go to Circuit Court, there can be order for payment of attorney's fees for certain types of things if it's provided for by statute or agreement, but at the municipal court level, well, it's not even municipal court, at the municipal level, at this stage, there's nothing in the ordinance that provides for that.
Based on the answer we got from the other attorney, ours, I believe.
Yeah, and actually, there's some dispute with that answer.
We would, hold on, hold on. Before we talk about that, that's attorney-client privileged information. Yeah, but I'm just, I just want to make sure it's clear that everybody understands. If we are going to discuss that, we would need to authorize the release of that attorney-client privileged information. So I think that that would be an important distinction to make. So if we were to start down that road, there would need to be consensus on the council to have that type of discussion and release that protected information at this time. Sorry, Dave, I just wanted to. I was just going to ask if Mayor had any comments based on.
Yeah, well, I have a lot of comments that I can't say right now. Yeah, and because we got it so late, you know, late on Friday, there was no ability for us to even respond to, you know, all of the things that were stated there. So, is that okay?
Yes, that's correct. There's been no response on the part of anybody, and I certainly haven't been directed to either, but at this point in time.
I am hearing from our community again that the council is not following through with this ethics complaint. And I feel like it's our responsibility to the taxpayers to let this process take place.
That was going to be one of my questions then. What has been the delay? Like, how come this hasn't gone? Who has decided to not have this at the Ethics Committee?
Well, I will take responsibility for that, I guess, because the council encouraged us to find a resolution and to try to negotiate with Nancy and her attorney, and there was some delay in setting up a meeting to do that. And then we had a meeting, and then there was, you know, some delays due to emergencies and scheduling by Nancy's attorney through no fault of his own, so there was a delay in him having the ability to issue a response. So my understanding was the consensus of the council was to try to negotiate something, and that's what we did. I mean, I think you could still forward it to the Ethics Committee, it could still go to the Ethics Committee, and we can still have meetings with her attorney and try to come up with a resolution, but it was through those negotiations that the delay occurred. I guess, here's the thing, it's going to the Ethics Committee unless you, you know, withdraw it or you want to continue negotiations. You'd have to actually, my understanding of the ordinance is it's going to the Ethics Committee unless there's a resolution that comes before an ethics hearing or unless the council votes to rescind their complaint. Is that correct? Does that make sense?
That's correct. Essentially, in either case, it would go to the Ethics Committee whether, without, unless there's a rescission of it. That rescission can just be based upon a unconditional motion on the part of the council, or it can be based upon a voluntary resolution of the situation. But in either case, it would result in a determination that it wasn't necessary to proceed to the Ethics Committee because you're satisfied with the result short of that.
I'm of the opinion that we need to take this to the Ethics Committee, and if in the meantime, before a meeting is scheduled and the Ethics Board takes a look at it, if there's a resolution, then we can look at it. But like I said, I'm hearing complaints from the community that we're not doing anything. Why isn't this going? Why isn't this going to the Ethics Committee? There's people out there that completely understand that there was confidential information disclosed in the public newspapers.
This is my question. Nancy did not give any information that was not public knowledge. She did not give any information out about any city doings. All she did was say what happened to her in closed session. And she mentioned the bank, which was common knowledge, public knowledge, everybody-
Wasn't common knowledge to me.
You mean, you didn't know that night what, what was going on with the library and that was already out? That was public knowledge at that time. So, and where have we, where is there a violation? Have we proved that there is a violation?
It's really not up to us to prove anything. It's, it's your decision whether you want to follow your own ordinance or not. So if you don't want to follow the ordinance, then you would have to make a motion to not follow the ordinance and to rescind your complaint. And you have that option to do that tonight.
Well, there has, I haven't seen a violation, only everybody's talked.
We had a copy of the newspaper article from the Edgerton Reporter-
Well, that's not the city's violation, we didn't, the council didn't do that.
We, that's right. We made the decision after we saw the article in all of the papers that we were going to file an ethics complaint because it was a closed session conversation that she was sharing. And then we voted to do that.
But it was nothing about the city's business, it was her own. So where is the violation? I, I'm not saying right or wrong what she published in the paper. What I'm saying is, how can we say she violated the ordinance when she talked about herself? She didn't give any public information or council or, or city information to anyone.
That's not the ordinance, though. The ordinance is regarding speaking on closed session matters. And I'll second Linda's motion that this should go forward to-
You don't need a motion, it's already going. You need a motion if you don't want to enforce the ordinance and you want to rescind the ethics complaint.
The vote to go, for this to go to the Ethics Board and the, the complete ethics complaint was already voted on unanimously. Oh, who didn't? Oh, Maxine voted no?
Yes, I voted no, because I felt that we should go back to the council and it should be discussed at that level.
And just to clarify, we voted to have it looked at. And then our city administrator, the chief of police, and then the lawyer for the city of Milton, decided that it needs to move on to the next step. Where it stalled or delayed, I'm learning about more today, but we should, this should be sitting at the Ethics Committee.
We have to let this process continue in order to, to, to end this whole situation. We have to continue with the process. And just like Larry pointed out, we have an ordinance that we approved. And if we're not going to follow our own ordinances, then how can we expect the people in this community to do that? And I'm, as far as whether or not she was talking about her own person or the city council, you don't go into closed session in your kitchen table. You do it at a public, at, at the city hall, at a council meeting. I mean, I'm sorry, I just had to, I, I had to put that out there.
Well, and I can't say anymore either because it was in closed session, but-
Good point.
Good point, Maxine.
Because I don't, I don't want to have to go to the Ethics Committee.
That's why we have the ethics ordinance. Is there any further comment or is there any, is there anything else you want to do? This was put on in case you wanted to do something else. And I guess, you know, I will still try to negotiate something and, and then we'll just notify the Ethics Committee to schedule something, is that the next step, Mark?
Yes, that, that would be correct.
Then the Ethics Committee will determine if there was cause?
That's correct, they'll have a hearing and the, the council will need to present its evidence on whether or not there was a violation. And Alder Person Lottner can present her evidence and why there wasn't. And I presume that whatever other legal arguments the parties wish to make will be made to the, to the Ethics Committee and then they will make a determination at that time of probable cause.
And I think, I think one important distinction that, that Attorney Schrader touched on previously, that at least in, in my hearing from, from folks on the council, that continues to be either lost or confused or, or misunderstood is that, and again, I think it bears repeating, the Ethics Committee has no legal authority over any sanctions, any punishment, any damages, any word you want to use, over Alder Person Lottner, even if they find her to be in violation of the ordinance. This is a very important distinction that's been brought up to me on several occasions that I think is, continues to get lost. The Ethics Committee has no legal authority to impose any penalties on Alder Person Lottner, even if she is found to be guilty. So, some of the threats and the scare tactics that may be used are not accurate. So please keep that in mind, so I don't have to continue to field that question over and over and over and over and over again. The ultimate authority and discretion on any punishment that would be levied on Alder Person Lottner would be with this board and these people who are sitting here tonight, including Alder Person Lottner and Ryan on the phone. So please, don't confuse these two boards. The Ethics Committee reviews the complaint and finds a determination of probable cause and then puts forth a recommendation. They cannot remove her from council, they cannot censor her, they cannot fine her, it would be this board, this committee, the City Council of Milton. So, I just want to make that very, very clear. And I'm sure I'll get a question about it tomorrow, but that's, that's the truth of the matter, no matter what you're reading in the newspaper, no matter what you're hearing on telephone calls, no matter what you're reading in letters from people's attorneys, it's not accurate.
Larry?
And it was designed that way.
Who was on the committee that did develop that?
It was designed exactly as you're describing it. Because the ultimate responsibility does fall back on the council. I just think that there's people who are scared by you're integrating something that's absolutely not true.
Is there any other comments, Attorney Schrader, that you have? Or did we cover everything?
No, I have no, no further comments. Others have questions, I don't know, but I don't have any further comments.
Then, that's our discussion. And are we still waiting for another bank? Did you want to take a five-minute break or something, or?
We could continue on with the agenda.
Okay.
I'm sure Linda's got some general items.
Linda, we have 15 minutes to kill. I didn't think I would ever say this to you, but the floor is yours.
This coming Sunday is the 14th Annual Pancake Breakfast, starts at 7 o'clock at the fire department. So, please come out and, and visit with our, eat and visit with our fire service people and EMS. We have the Gathering Place Pumpkin Fest on October 8th, again, Saturday, I'm sorry. Did I say Sunday for the fireman's?
You said Sunday.
Sunday, okay, that's what I, I meant, okay. Pancake Breakfast is Sunday and Pumpkin Fest at the Gathering Place is from 11 to 3 on Saturday. So you can bring your kids out and do some fun Halloween pumpkin-y stuff. And then we also have the Prairie Seed Collection is October 15th from 10 to 12. Groups and individuals are welcome to come. It's a very, it's a very fun day, it's a fun fall day. And then the Chamber of Commerce has their 7th Annual Malt and Hops Fest, October 29th from 6 to 9. So, there's a lot of things going on here in the city of Milton, so be sure to get out and check them out.
Yeah, it's gonna be fun, maybe even the weather will be nice.
I hope so.
Does anybody else have any general items?
I just want to make sure she says for her ordinance report.
Okay, our next meeting will be Tuesday, October 18th, 2016, although-
Technically.
Not. Do you want to go next?
Well, that's fine.
So, otherwise I'll screw everything up.
I mean, the next meeting of the common council to discuss council matters will be October 18th, but the next meeting of the common council to discuss budgetary purposes will be next week, Monday, October 10th at 6:00 PM, and that will be our budget kickoff meeting. The plan for that evening is Dan and I will entertain and delight you with a rousing presentation of our budget outlook for 2017, similar to what we did last year. We certainly can open it up for questions. I was going to talk about this under the city administrator report, but, but I'll, I'll give a little bit more detail. There are still, as I kind of explained to the council in the weekly updates and the budget updates, there's still a number of key variables that we are waiting on that will not be available to us by October 10th. So it will simply be a budget presentation of the budget as it currently, as it looks at that snapshot in time. We won't be able to galvanize that budget until we receive some additional information, both from the state and both from contractors and from our health insurance provider. But the plan for that evening, at least from my perspective, is to give the council an overview of, of kind of where we're at and, and how we are constructing the budget and the constraints that we are faced with while constructing that budget, both mandated by the state and both imposed by, by previous budget decisions. So, that is, is, is the plan for Monday, October 10th. And as I said, you know, we'll certainly, you know, try to give you as much up-to-date information as possible. It continues to change, it changed this morning at 9 o'clock again. So, that $249 figure that I gave you last week is already out of date. And that's how quickly those things change. So that's what we have planned for next week, Tuesday, or next week, Monday at 6, 6:00 PM. I'm going to continue to confuse that. How many times have I said next week, Tuesday, we'll have that meeting? Next week, Monday at 6:00 PM, we'll have that presentation for, for the council to, to start that process.
Is that open to the public?
Yes.
Yes, yes, and we want the public to come. So, this is a personal invitation to anybody in the city of Milton or who may be affected by our budget to please come and join us at 6:00 PM. And you do not have to RSVP. You can just show up at any time, you don't even have to be on time. We welcome your input.
There won't be any decisions made that evening, but there'll be a budget presentation that I think will be important for folks to, to see. And I know Becky and I will meet and Jim and I already have a, a, a meeting on Tuesday, so, you know, we, we can get into greater detail, but there won't be any decisions made that night. The first decision that will be made will come October 18th and that's when we will, the council will approve the budget for publication. And that is, is more of a housekeeping matter. It won't set any, it, it won't set any, anything in stone at that point, but we are required by the state statutes to publish a budget and that will be on October 18th, we will publish that budget. The budget can change and will invariably change many times between October 18th and when it is finally adopted on November 29th. But we are required to publish a budget at that time, so. So, come join us for the fun on October 10th.
And will we publish that budget online too? So, you know, keep that in mind, that you can read through the budget once it's published. And if you have any questions or concerns or suggestions, we're welcome to any and all feedback. So remember that you can look at the budget online and Dan will personally meet with anybody that has questions, right?
I will.
Okay.
Burn it, but-
Okay, this is a challenge to the community, let's fill up Dan's days with information-
Please don't, please don't, he's way too valuable to me.
And there's this thing called baseball.
Okay, and we don't want the Cubs going anywhere, so on those Cubs nights, that's what you should schedule your evening meetings.
That's the caveat that I will put on there. Please check the NLDS and NLCS calendar. If there aren't any times in which the Cubs are playing, please contact Dan and schedule a meeting with him during that time.
And I will be unavailable.
That being said, that October 10th meeting is Cub Day. I don't know if we want to reschedule the budget.
We'll let you wear your Cubs stuff. And that's as far as it's going to go.
We'll make it quick, Jeremy. I think first pitch will be 7 o'clock.
Wow, you think, okay, all right.
I'm gonna talk slow that night. Ryan, do you have an elder person report? Hi, Ryan, thank you for calling in and joining us. Dave? Linda?
I just would like for you to know that the Tourism Commission is looking at their budget very closely. We're trying to find as many good, easy, inexpensive ways to promote Milton, not only outside of this community, but also in the community. And certainly, if anybody has any suggestions for us, please contact myself or Inga and hopefully we can keep promoting us.
Yeah, I'll have some more, go ahead.
On October 18th, in addition to the regular council meeting and, and some budget discussion at that meeting, we would also like to schedule a training for the city council to attend. This is a training that has been recommended by our insurance carrier. On October 18th, during the daytime, all staff will be required to attend what we are classifying as mandatory training on harassment training. This is provided by our insurance provider. It just so happens, by coincidence, today, Inga and I were also at our insurance provider and sat through eight-hour training on harassment. And one of the things that they indicated during that training is, they have seen a, the insurance carrier has seen a dramatic uptick in the amount of claims that are being filed against elected officials. So, there was their recommendation that because elected officials, this group that's here with us tonight, is also covered under our insurance, our liability insurance, that they also go through that training. So, on October 18th, if folks are available, we would like to schedule that training in advance of the council meeting. And we'd like to schedule that at 5:00 by 15:00. If that is, if folks are available to have that, that discussion with our insurance carrier that, that evening.
We thought it would be easiest to do it on a night that we already have a meeting, otherwise we have to bring them back. I mean, it's not really an option of whether we're going to have the training, the council needs to have the training because of the uptick in harassment filings against elected officials. So hopefully we can all get here by 5:15. What, what does everybody's schedule look like? We would be not having those meetings that night.
Or if we had an item that needed public safety's attention, we could schedule it at 6:45. They indicated that the training lasts about an hour, but you should, you should plan for 90 minutes in order to make any availability for questions or discussions that may occur. So, if we had it at 5:30 and it ran for 90 minutes, that would push us right up against that nine, or that 7 o'clock hour. So if we did 5:15 and it ran 90 minutes, that'd give us a 15-minute buffer to maybe eat some pizza and have a public safety meeting if necessary.
I'll be here at some point, I have a 4 o'clock. Very well be here by 5:15.
So 5:15 is, like I said, the insurance provider, the train, the trainer will be here on, on site that, all day anyways, so 5:15 would be great.
I'm okay with you, Ryan.
If, if a council member couldn't make it to the 5:15 one, could they go to the one during the day?
Yeah, absolutely, we have one at 10 and one at- Yeah, absolutely. We have one at 10 and one at...
10, 1:30 and 3.
Yeah, so we have meetings during the day at 10, 1:30 and 3. So yeah, absolutely. If you don't want to, if you can't attend at 5:15, you certainly could come. It'll be really more geared towards council members at that 5:15 meeting, so it'd probably be more advantageous. If you could come to the 5:15, but for some reason if you're not able to make it, you can make one of those other times. That would work as well.
Anything else? No?
Uh, no, I don't, I don't know.
All right. Joint Fire Department, no. Chief of Police?
Got two things for you tonight. The first is we're still working on our smash-and-grab thefts. We have a number of leads that we've been following up on and we're continuing to work those. The following up on leads has also led to a reduction in the number of events, which gives us a little hope we're maybe talking to the right people. But we'll continue to work it and we're not alone. There's been some incidents regionally as well. We aren't sure that ours are tied to the regional incidents, but this is a crime that is slowly increasing, it seems. And lots of identity theft involved and things like that, not in our incidents, but in these regional ones. So my advice remains true, even though we've had our cases here locally fall off. Still encourage people to keep your belongings safe and lock your vehicles and make sure you call us if you see something weird because we want to check it out. The other thing I have is I've just recently been able to finalize that we are again doing the Lunch with a Cop program with Northside this year. And so we have 10 different lunch events established with all 10 homeroom teachers and their homeroom classes. This year I'm going to switch it up a little bit and it's not going to be me. I'm going to bring an officer with me for each one of those as well. So we're in the process of figuring out who's going which time. I figure those fourth grade kids are going to see them a lot more than they're going to see me sitting in my office. So I want to get their faces in front of them too and looking forward to that.
Thank you.
I will say on the news today on CNN, they had a big story about the police chief in Hawthorne, California that started to doing Coffee with the Cop. Apparently he got on CNN, so...
Was he the original?
I don't know.
Because I stole it. I'm willing to admit I wasn't the first one to think of it. Actually, Friday, ironically enough, is the, President Obama has designated this as National Community Policing Week and designated Friday as National Coffee with a Cop Day and I'm on vacation, so.
What? Who approved that vacation? What the heck? Let the community know when you're going to be gone. Director of Public, no, City Clerk Deputy Treasurer, and you do have some news and you should talk about that exciting news.
I'm not sure which news you're referring to. But in-person absentee voting has been going on now for a little over a week and we've already had 45 people come in and voting in the clerk's office, so.
Who's winning?
I have no idea. We do not count them early.
When do you count them for public information?
Yes, so absentee ballots will be opened and fed through the tabulator on Election Day with all the other ballots.
Awesome. And then is there a spot that you can check to see if your ballot was counted?
Yes, you can go to MyVote Wisconsin and you can put in your name and then it will tell you whether or not I have sent your absentee ballot, which I would have if you requested it. It'll let you know if it's been returned back to us as well.
Great. Okay, Director of Public Works?
If the weather cooperates, they may have Merchant Row Blacktop by the end of this week and Chicago Street by the end of next week. That's about it.
There's like no brush pickup or anything that you want to talk about?
We did the brush collection from the storm from last week, so we did that extra one. And I think in two weeks from now, there's a regular brush collection. And leaf collection is going to be delayed about a week. We just have to fix the Dumbo machine, so it'll be a week later, but they're not falling yet. Oh, the, oh, yeah, the elephant machine, the, yeah, the Dumbo truck, yeah. Sorry, that's just the nickname for it, the leaf vacuum. It's the Dumbo truck, so.
Director of the Library?
The Teen Advisory Board, it's 14 members right now. They do a lot of volunteer work at the library. They just did their first fundraiser. It was a 5K. They had over 70 participants and made almost $1,000 now up to, so that's great. If you like throwing large vegetables and seeing them be crushed, you'll like the October 15th Pumpkin Junkin at the library. We have a set of rules. You need to come by and pick them up or see them online to build your catapult. And they should be large enough to throw a pumpkin to smash it. There'll also be desserts, pumpkin decorating, and then games for the kids as well, so. It starts at 11:00.
Finance Director?
The only thing I have is we sent out RFPs for assessing services this past week. And I've fielded a few phone calls already this, over the last couple of days. So I'm feeling pretty good that we'll get some respondents and we put a deadline of October 31st.
Anybody else want to talk?
I just, I have a question for Inga. We had a presentation from the school district at one of our council meetings and I've heard that a lot of people haven't actually seen the presentation on the referendum. Do you know what meeting that was? Because I'm thinking that it would be on the YouTube.
It is on the YouTube channel. I'm just not sure exactly which meeting that was offhand.
Like, I don't even remember that. Okay, we'll get you more minutes. Bye. Okay, so are you going to be the master of ceremonies, Dan?
He's finding out where Dan's at.
Oh, okay. Are we DPSing him? I mean, we could DPS. The council voted to forbid team building when there was any person absent. Do you remember that? Something you could reconsider too. I'm just saying. Okay, Dan, you want to go? Okay. Please approach the bench.
So just so, just so folks remember, or Dan, did you have some, did you have some preamble?
No, I didn't.
So the reason that we're doing this is to, really is a big thank you to our two local banks who participated in a funding opportunity for the library. Folks on the council remember there was kind of a secondary discussion that took place in order to fund a kind of a gap in financing for the library project. And the two local banks kind of swooped in and not only did they allow us to provide that gap in funding, they did so, you know, in an affordable and effective way. And that's really not what we're here to say thank you for. What we're here to say thank you for is during the larger refinancing that we did earlier this year, the $7.65 million refinancing that the council approved, the banks played a major role in allowing us to execute that refinancing. If it wasn't for their acceptance of us allowing the early refinance of that loan, the whole $7.65 million refinancing may have fallen apart. And as folks may or may not remember, that refinancing ended up saving the city over $1 million. It's $1 million of taxpayer money that was not, at the end of the day, was not spent. And it was made possible by the two local banks, really foregoing profits from their two financial institutions to allow us to proceed with that refinancing. And as I said, without, although they were, they were a very small portion of that refinancing, they were the linchpin that allowed us to kind of bring that whole package together. So as a small token of our appreciation and to say thank you to those, the two local financial institutions, First Community Bank and Bank of Milton, we had these plaques prepared, which is really the Courier article with the press release that talked about how that financing was made possible through their generosity and their willingness to work with us on a, in a very unique and effective and efficient way. So that was the purpose of the plaques and...
And it says that Al and I have been in the ratings column another year and a half.
Yep.
I really appreciate it. And our success, both banks here in town, is directly correlated.
Thank you. First Community Bank? After 5:00 PM? Okay. Awesome. Thanks. We'll be there. Thank you. Thanks.
We're going to see a lot of each other this month. Yeah, just come every day.
Come every day. We're not going to feed you every day, but we'll throw some pizza your way every now and then. All right. Will you? We'll try. Don't break a sweat, though. Okay, well, we will see you Monday. Our next common council meeting will be Tuesday, October 18th, 2016 at 7:00 PM. And can we get a motion to adjourn? Second. There's a motion, a second. All those in favor? The motion carries. We are all adjourned. Thank you.